Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, welcome everybody. This is the November 16th, 2022, meeting of the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission. Please stand with me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vasquez, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Hayek?
Here.
Commissioner Lemo?
Here.
Vice Chair Pletcher?
Here.
Chair ML?
Here.
Ms. Vasquez, can you please make the public comments announcement for us?
Yes. This is a time and place for public comments. Registration for public comments is available for those wishing to address the Traffic Commission regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for specific agenda items shall be called and heard during that specific item. All remarks should be addressed to the Traffic Commission as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the Traffic Commission unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city engineer for administrative follow-up. One individual has requested to speak on this item, and pursuant to Traffic Commission standards, the public comment speakers are allowed three minutes for the record. Zero written statements have been submitted. Also, please silence all cell phones during the meeting, and please remember to mute your microphones when you are not speaking. Okay, and currently we're having a little bit of an issue with the Zoom, so we're gonna continue to try to get the public speaker on.
Okay, should we wait for an opportunity to do that, or move ahead?
No, maybe a couple minutes.
Is it possible, if they're listening, to have them just call in?
We can try that too.
I'm assuming that we still have that Brown Act provision that allows us to meet by way of Zoom or...
Yeah, let me see if I have their information.
Well, it's a public meeting, and there's not currently a remote option for commissioners, but we're also allowing for public comment to be Zoomed.
But would that also allow that person to call in instead if the Zoom's not working?
So we can move ahead through the summary notes, but just not get into the engineers' reports? Okay, so number five on the agenda is our summary notes from our October 19th, 2022 meeting. Do the commissioners have any comments regarding the summary notes? I have one comment, which simply is the adjournment on the summary notes says that we were adjourned until November 20th, but I think it's November 16th, right? Okay, so while we wait for our one public speaker to come online, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with the agenda. We're gonna move to number seven, which is the status report of prior Traffic Commission recommendations. There are none. We can then move ahead to number eight, commission referrals from our October 19th, 2022 meeting. There are none there. So we can go ahead, move forward to number nine, work program and commission schedule. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff regarding work program or the commission's schedule? Seeing none, we can move now to number 10, which is the Traffic Commission comments and Commissioner Lemo has told me that he has a comment to make on number 10.
So even though this is not the end of the meeting, I guess in the interest of time and while we're trying to wait for our speaker, I'll go ahead, and I just want to let you and staff know that this will be my last meeting. I've spoken with our mayor, who is the person who had appointed me to the Traffic Commission. I think we're coming up on 12 years. It's a pretty long time, and I think it's time to bring some new people with some fresh ideas aboard. But one of the things I wanted to stress as heavily as I could, because over 12 years, you learn a lot of things. A lot of the things you learn from other commissioners, Tom Gregory, Sharon McMahon, and Diane McKay all sort of took me under their wings at different times over the past 12 years or so, and I am very grateful for everything I learned from them. But the other thing that I think is most important, that I would hope that all existing and future commissioners can learn from, is the quality of our staff. I had the unique opportunity to work with seven or eight different cities in Southern California, and one in Ohio during the last 12 years, and work with many of their different commissions, but with all of their staffs. All very good, qualified people. Couldn't hold a candle to our staff. Our staff is really the cream of the crop. And we're very fortunate that our staff also happens to be pretty loyal, because I happen to know through the grapevines over the years, the number of opportunities offered to our staff by other cities. And they stayed here and they followed through with us. So the one thing that I would ask most importantly of future commissioners, who are not even appointed yet, but all commissioners staying on this particular body, is to recognize staff. We had interesting times go through our commission over the last 12 years, where, and we've seen this happen at City Council and at Planning Commission, where people are gonna come on board and they're gonna fix everything, and they're gonna explain to staff the way things are supposed to be done. Not a good way to start. That's probably very necessary in some cities, definitely not here. Our staff here is second to none, not taking anything away from all the other staffs, they're just not as good as ours. And so with that, I want to give a great big thanks to staff who have been ridiculously patient with me. Mr. Mashenko had dark hair when I came here. And I think he's going to be blaming me for the change. Because it can't be his age. He looks eternally young. But that hair changed, and I think that was probably some of my peculiar questions over the years. And I see Mr. Hadari smiling because his hair hasn't changed yet, so he's getting out under the, he's getting out under the Lemo provision, which is good. But seriously, all kidding aside, our staff is remarkable. I cannot thank you enough for everything you do for our city, and especially everything you do for volunteers on the commission. So with that, is our speaker ready yet?
So as of right now, the speaker hasn't even joined, so no public comment speakers right now.
Okay, well, just respond to Mr. Lemo's comment and say that we appreciate your comments, and I think many of us on the commission share your high regard for the staff. We're sorry to see you go, but it's been a pleasure to work with you, and you will be missed. So do any of the other commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Ferris?
Thanks. Again, I think that 12 years is certainly, it's long tenure, and I think it gives that perspective of longstanding, you know, understanding of the issues that come before the city, and how to be able to manage those things you've shared with us, you know, times in which, you know, previous meetings and previous things, and how it helped to provide context for the current decisions we have to make. As someone who's also, like, served in various committees and got the opportunity to serve with many different people with different opinions, the real critical part is, one, I think it is true, the staff is phenomenal. They are great and informative in helping us understand things. And the ability to work together in a variety of these things, even if we may not agree, the perspectives we come to, those means hopefully provide for better decision-making. And so I'm glad I got the opportunity to serve with you, work with you, and wish you the best.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Pletcher.
Tried to give you a wave.
Sorry.
No, just real quick, Commissioner Lemo, I think I'm the, I may be the only one on here that actually served with you twice. I came, I left and came back, but I do want to say, especially the this was my first chance and opportunity to serve on a commission for the city, and I do remember, you know, and certainly appreciate you giving a lot of guidance at the beginning. I mean, I remember it very distinctly, focusing on some of the importance of staff reports and availability. and availability for somebody coming in that just really had a, you know, for me just wanting to serve the city, and that was kind of my blank slate, and I appreciate your wisdom and guidance during that time. And I appreciate, you know, I think from all of us, your contribution to the city over 12 years, and you've served in many other capacities, the City of Thousand Oaks. I think the city's internally grateful for that. But to echo your comments on our city staff, I mean, I've had the ability to work for, on a staff level, and see how other cities are ran, in LA County and Ventura County, and I can say the professionalism and the intelligence and just wisdom that our staff has is, I mean, it truly is second to none and doesn't hold a candle to, you know, many other cities. So I appreciate your contribution, and, you know, from me to you, just thank you very much.
Okay, if there are no further commissioner comments, my understanding is we do not have a public speaker now, so we can go ahead and move forward in the agenda to item number six, which is our engineers' reports. And I will ask that our transit program manager, Mike Hauser, please present to us the first report.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment first?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't see, I can't see very well, I'm going to bring my glasses next time. Commissioner Hayek.
I just want to clarify, I recused myself at the last meeting, but today, tonight's agenda item, although similar, isn't discussing funding or shifting responsibilities to the school district, so there's no need for me to recuse myself, and I'm participating in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayek. Mr. Hauser, please proceed with the report.
Thank you, commissioners. Mike Hauser, Transit Program Manager. Well, this is the fifth in a series of meetings that staff has had and presented with the city council and the traffic commission, that started with our routine annual presentation regarding locations that did not qualify for crossing guard and recommendation for closure. Based upon those meetings and the feedback that we received from the commission at the October 19th meeting, we are back this evening to provide some specific recommendations to changes and modifications to current policies and procedures as it relates to the crossing guard program. Just to remind the commission that currently, the city council has authorized crossing guard loca, 24 crossing guard locations that service 20 schools throughout the community, and the decision to place those is based largely upon their meeting certain criteria that staff has been using since at least 1999 to make determinations on whether or not it's appropriate for a crossing guard. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to the city engineer, who's going to provide some comments about the objectives that we hope to achieve with tonight's meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mike. As Mike mentioned, the, and was, as was directed by the city council in August, I guess we just wanted to highlight the, kind of the objective of tonight, and that is to develop an objective, objective criteria in the ultimate crossing guard program and policy that can be utilized to determine whether or not intersections qualify for crossing guards. We've taken that approach with our draft policy as included in your packet tonight, and which we'll walk through right now in further detail, and then take some discussion and direction on. So that's trying to distill the matter into the main focus, and this is also captured in, actually, the very, the very beginning of the MUTCD has a clause that basically is very related to that about the best way to achieve the effective traffic control is through uniform application of policies. So that's, that was our charge here from the, from council, and we're hoping that that will be something we can finalize. So I'll turn it back over to Mike.
Thank you. At our last presentation, we covered a lot of areas that are related to the crossing guard program, but tonight's focus is really on three areas of the current policy that we want to ask the traffic commission to take a look at and provide recommendations. As you recall, virtually everything that comes before you relates in some form to the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Crossing guard program is one of those, and what's unique for our community is, at least in this area, we are essentially the only agency that doesn't follow those standards. We have standards which are, make it easier to qualify for a crossing guard location. Based upon the feedback that we received from you, we are recommending two changes to the policy, one change to the count standards, and then we're also going to offer up some additional alternatives that the traffic commission can consider for unique situations. Our first proposed change relates to a placement of crossing guards at locations that are outside of the city limits. Currently, we do have an example of that for the Madrona Elementary School. The crossing itself and the school is outside the city limits, and so one of our specific recommendations is that the city no longer entertain that for a variety of reasons. This is not a financial decision, but rather a practical practice in terms of what is in the best interest of the city, and also consistent with the
Recording in progress.
With the county's own policy that the individual schools should be responsible for crossing guards in their respective areas. The second area that we would like to focus on tonight has to do with the approval authority. As the commission is aware, we routinely bring crossing guard matters to you, seek your comment and input, and then ultimately, the decision is made by the city council. We're recommending a change to that process, which would include four points for consideration. First point being that any request to add a new location be submitted in writing, which would be evaluated by staff and then presented to TTAC for consideration. Past practice has been staff will often independently evaluate and make a decision on a standpoint, but going forward, every request would come to the traffic commission. Secondly, we would report annually to the commission and identify all locations that don't meet whatever objective standard we develop and codify as part of the process. Traffic commission would not approve locations that do not meet the adopted standards. It would be very, very cut and dry. They either meet or do not meet the standard. And if the decision is that they do not meet the standard, an applicant for either a new location or somebody that disagrees with the decision to close a location would still have the opportunity to appeal to the city council, who would be the final determiner of, for those particular locations. In addition to the policy changes, staff is recommending one change to the count stand. The commission, commission at the last meeting was very clear that they appreciated the fact that these standards were easier to meet than state standards and the desire to keep those standards, and for uncontrolled intersections and stop intersections, we concur with that, and so we're not recommending any changes. However, for signalized intersections, since it is already highly unusual to place crossing guards there to begin with, we are recommending that we adopt the state minimum standards for those particular locations. And I want to be clear that, at least based upon the counts that we did this spring, the decision to raise that standard to the state standard would not impact any school that we currently have that has a crossing guard at a signalized intersection. We also want to provide for two additional criteria for the traffic commission to consider when a location does not meet our basic objective criteria. The first one being that on several of the crossing locations, they may meet three out of four of the locations, but is short in some fashion on one. I'm going to use an existing school, there is a school from the 2022 counts that we did that meet the criteria for the vehicles, meet the criteria for the AM pedestrians, but do not meet our criteria for the PM criteria. And so what we are suggesting in those situations, so long as the other three criteria meet the higher threshold of the state standard, and using this school as an example, this would be an example of that, then the traffic commission could still approve this location even though one of the four criteria is not met. The second additional criteria that we are recommending that the traffic commission incorporate into their, into their policies, has to do with locations, uncontrolled locations that experience high traffic volumes, and of course, these are general locations that are on arterial roadways with higher speeds and higher vehicle volumes, and so we are recommending that when the AM and PM counts for vehicles exceeds 1,000 vehicles, then the traffic commission can lower the city pedestrian standard from 20 down to 10, which is only 25% of the state standard. And then if this reduced target was met for both AM and PM pedestrians, then you could also approve that location as well. We do suggest that it be a part of the policy that pedestrian counts below 10, regardless of vehicle volumes, automatically disqualify a location for a crossing guard. The proposed standards that we are, the standards that we are proposing tonight would have a slight impact on staff's previous recommendations as they relate to crossing locations that do not qualify. Using this proposal, as well as the additional criteria, based upon the 2022 counts that we conducted, eight of 24 locations would not qualify to have a crossing guard assigned. Using the city's current standards, just a reminder, 10 of 24 locations do not qualify, and if we use the state's current standard, which are adopted by most agencies, 16 of 24 locations would not qualify for a crossing guard. Our specific recommendation to the traffic commission tonight is to receive our report and provide us comments and feedback on the proposed draft crossing guard program standards and policies. And then two, to recommend to the city council that they approve the draft, City of Thousand Oaks School Crossing Guard Program Standards and Policies and the resolution which was attached in your agenda. In addition, we have also provided for your reference copies of the CAMUTCD, portions of it that relate specifically to the crossing guard program. And with that, staff is available to take your questions and provide any additional information that we can.
Mr. Hauser, thank you for that presentation. Does the commission have any questions for staff? If not, I would like to open up the item for a discussion so that the public has an opportunity to speak on it, but if there, if there are questions. Okay, Commissioner Hayek.
When we say signalized, are we saying just regular traffic signals, or could it be a blinking light, or are they signalized crosswalks? Also, I just want to clarify exactly what that consists of.
Signalized crosswalks. So traffic lights with crossing, crossing.
The correct. Regular three lights.
Regular, regular.
Yeah, full, full, full intersection, full traffic signal.
But if a blinking light is at an intersection, is that
Pedestrian crossing, yeah, that's
That wouldn't be considered a signalized crossing?
Right, that would not be a signalized crossing.
Okay, and then the, the one at Madronia that was referenced, that's outside the city, city lines, is, would that, is that one of the eight that doesn't meet the criteria?
Yes, in fact, that, that particular school doesn't meet any of the criteria, even the city's reduced standard for either vehicles or pedestrians for any account.
Okay, I'll save the rest for my discussion. Thank you.
Just one quick question, so just for clarification, the Madronia location was, that was a school that was included in our prior recommendation for elimination, because it did not meet the, the standards that exist at the
That is correct. That was one of the five that staff recommended in April. And I should add that, at least for the last three counts, that, that particular school has not met the criteria.
Do we have any further questions from the commission? Vice Chair Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate your, you're playing the long game on your multiple times you're in front of us and doing presentations. Regarding the Madronia location, can you just remind me what intersection where that current crossing guard is stationed, please? And then, just to confirm, you've, you've mentioned, I believe I caught it, over the last, you said, I think, three times, this has been kind of, that location's been on the block, and we've, it's come here and gone to council, and councils at least, two of the three times, because we really didn't get a clear idea the last time, has, has still continued to fund it, right?
That's correct, and in some of the additional schools that were in that list, even when I was managing this program 10 years ago, were on that list. So for some schools, it goes considerably back.
Has council, when they consider the recommendation coming from this body and, and kind of operate kind of outside that realm, I'll just say, is there any indication or feedback as to the reason why they continue to fund this location, or any of the other locations that are kind of on the block, per se? I mean, are they just, I'm just trying to better understand what happens at the council level that, coming out of this, as we look at this new policy, are there any other considerations that councils may be considering that we're not talking about here at this level?
Yeah, I mean, each, I guess, has, has had their own criteria, but in general, we're not aware of any other criteria that would be applicable, other than just maybe a desire not to make any changes.
Yeah, so nothing objective
Right.
Versus kind of a subjective willingness as a council member to fund one or, one over the other, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. I do have some questions, I'm trying to get a sense of kind of how this, how this would work, based upon how the resolution is drafted. I'm wondering if you can help me with, I'm looking at the resolution itself. Under the section that says "final approval authority," the language states TTAC should be the governing body that reviews annual requests. So does this resolution actually authorize the traffic commission to make approval denial decisions, or is it a, you know, we kind of like it to be that way, and the council still approves everything?
Probably that, that, that language could be updated to shall, but I can let our Assistant City Attorney Noel Duran.
Okay, that's, that's helpful for me, because I'm trying to understand, and that's fine, if, if that will be the, one of the changes, because I was trying to understand if, for example, if the list of crossing guard locations is deemed to be approved by the traffic commission, if those are there, is that final approval? Is that the intent of the resolution, or does it still go to the council for approval? My understanding is that the intent of it would be it's final approval by the traffic commission, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and then if there's a denial at the traffic commission level, that's also final unless someone appeals, and that's the resolution is providing the mechanism by which that happens, right?
Correct.
Okay. If we could look at, under final approval authority, subsection four, it's a little, I'm wondering if we can possibly change the language a little bit to make it clearer. It says, "A decision of the TTAC to deny the addition of a crossing guard location, or the closure of an existing location may be appealed to the city council." I wonder if that could be changed to the decision to deny the addition or to close an existing location, because the way it words is that we could be denying the closure of a location, and I think that's not the intent of the paragraph, is that correct?
That is correct, and that is, that is a good addition.
Okay, thank you. Just also for context, well, let me, let me ask this. So under the, actually, if we go earlier in the resolution, so you have the qualifying standards, which has the uncontrolled intersection and always stop controlled intersections, which is the which is the current city standards for vehicles and pedestrians, right? But the signalized intersection is the C, the California MUTCD standards, right?
Yes.
So what, can you help me understand what the, under section one for the alternative standards, 75%, the way it was described in the report was that, well, three of the four met the city standards, but one of them didn't. As long as those other three met California standards, then that, that, that sounds like, that that would work. But the table underneath that has some different numbers that I don't, I don't, I don't understand how they relate. Can you help me clarify that?
Yes, when we mentioned of the four criteria, what it is, is there's vehicle counts and pedestrian counts, so that's two, and then it's AM and PM. So there's two vehicle counts and then there's two pedestrian counts. So that gives you the four data points.
Yep.
And so it's the, the three out of four. This table didn't list AM and PM necessarily in, to show the four.
Well, I guess what I'm looking at is under, under the alternative standard, 75% California manual of uniform traffic. And you go to the next page, it has a table for the standard. And the numbers in the vehicle and pedestrian counts, they're different from the city standards and they're different from Califor, the, are those the, the actual California standards, the 350 ones?
Yes, sir, those are the actual, and if it, to the benefit of the commission, both standards are up on the screen side by side for you.
And that table in the resolution, I think, is, is labeled on the, above it, CAMUTCD standards, so.
Yep.
A lot of the numbers are similar, 300s and 500s and 40s and 3, 350s and, but.
Can I just, for reference, is that 350 number the only place in the resolution, is that the only place in this packet that has the 350 number?
That is correct.
Okay. I wanted to kind of understand why I hadn't seen it before, but I, I think I understand it now. These are the standards if it meets at least three of those four, for, yes, at least three of the four, except for the one that it doesn't meet the city standards for, then that's okay. That, that, this table is the one that has to meet those standards, under the 75% alternative method.
Correct, Commissioner, and I would again turn your attention to the screen. And for Cypress School, this is an example of this particular situation where if you'll notice, the, one of the vehicle counts does not meet our minimum standard, but everything else about that school meets the higher criteria for the CAMUTCD. So in this instance, while it does not meet our minimum standards, you would still have the ability to approve this school because the remaining three of the four all meet the higher threshold.
Okay. Thank you. One last, a couple of questions. So in the previous evaluation of crossing guard locations, the traffic commission recommended, of the 24 locations that we had, we recommended five closures, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And if we were to recommend this policy and it were to be applied, eight locations would close?
Potentially, there would be no changes to any school this school year. We would do our counts as we normally do in March. On the basis of those numbers, we would come back and present you a full presentation and any recommendation would be based solely upon those numbers, not any prior numbers.
And if I might add, the five that were recommended for closure earlier this year were the first five of 10 that didn't qualify, didn't meet the current city standards. But only the first five were being recommended and the other five are going to be, continue to be evaluated and we're gonna, we're ultimately going to come back and be recommended as well. So it was really a total of 10 that were, that were failing to meet the standards, whereas the updated policy provides some more accommodation. So that would reduce that number to eight.
Right, so there were 10 that were recommended for closure. The traffic commission itself, in its evaluation of those 10, said no, keep five.
Not quite. What happened was staff made, and this is again another reason why we were seeking to sort of tighten the rules and staff independently made the decision that for five of the schools, they clearly exceeded the pedestrian minimums for those schools. The issue was the vehicle numbers. They were not meeting those numbers. So we focused our recommendations specifically on those schools that did not meet the pedestrian numbers or in the case of Medronia, where none of the criteria were applicable.
The reason why I'm asking some of the questions is that the feedback that I believe I remember we, we, we provided was that we were not necessarily wanting to make the standards higher in order to meet it, although what the recommendation is, is it is going to be higher for signalized intersections. And, and I understand, like, that's a, like, none of them are affected and that's a, a means of being able to do that. We also had requested, if I remember right, that there were the additional criteria that were important for us to have the ability to evaluate it. And this, the, the, the numbers really are still all about traffic and pedestrians. There's no additional criteria. It's just an additional way for us to approve something. The, the reason why I'm coming back to, like, if we have the policy, if it were in place now, eight of them would been recommended, even though the traffic commission in its review of it said only, only recommend five closures. This policy would have added three more for closure and there would have been no discretion. No, because under the policy, it says if it doesn't meet it, it cannot be approved. Am I reading that correctly?
You are reading that correctly and that's, that would be the, the goal of having an objective standard, but the number of sites that were going to be recommended for closure under the current standards was 10. Only the first five were presented forward because they were clearly, you know, below the, below the line and the other five, we're going to continue to monitor, you know, coming out of the first year of the school's reopening and everything. We didn't want to make a too large of a change. But the, really, the number that failed to meet the current standard is 10. But one point to consider is the overall number of campuses that may be affected or increase or decrease of the program. That's something that will evolve over time. That, that's a function of who's walking to school, how many people are, are walking to school and, and driving to these campuses and everything, so. And, and the, the policy will allow that to be, that will be flexible, that we evaluate it annually, as, as Mike has mentioned. So I think that the, the decision tonight on what the policy is probably should, should be less focused on the impact of the policy and more on having a clear policy that is objective and it follows, you know, some parameters and still is more generous in the state standard, which the commissioners previously had indicated that they, they like that, they like that Thousand Oaks is, has a, provides more for the, the residents, so.
And I completely understand that. And I have like one or two questions and I'll, and end my session of questions in, in doing that. But, but I, I do think it's important to understand the policy in how the impact of the policy actually occurs. By having a policy but not caring about the impacts, I think is not in the public's interest. So that's why I'm trying to understand if this is the policy we're acting, what would the impact be and would that change potentially what the recommendation of the policy is? So for example, if there was a location that was approved in last year's list, then when we did the traffic evaluation this time, it was just under the pedestrian counts. So it did not meet the California standards in three of the four as we're talking about. It just, it was very similar to last year, but just, like, just under the pedestrian counts when we chose to do the traffic, the pedestrian evaluation. Under the policy, traffic commission, it would be recommended for closure and we would not be able to approve it. That is the, that's the way the policy reads. So based upon what I'm hearing, we have the ability to have things brought to our attention. If they meet the standards, we can approve them or we can deny them. We can choose not to approve them. But we don't have any ability to where if they don't meet the standards, we could approve them. So it is, it is, it is a more, it is restrictive in, in the traffic commission's ability to use the information and approve deny. So it's, that's the reason why I'm kind of asking about that, so. That, so let me end the questions, give the rest of the commission the opportunity to, to discuss.
I think, just questions only right now. So Commissioner Lemo, you have questions?
Sorry, I think rather than ask a question, I will include those in, in my comments, or in, include what may be a question within the comment. I think it's, it doesn't stand alone fairly yet.
Okay. One final question from me, just so I understand correctly, the, the alternatives that we're looking at here, one and two, are these presented as a package to say that this new policy is going to have both of these alternatives attached to it or just one? Or, or how, how is this to be interpreted?
It is the intent that both of these alternatives would be available to the commission in its decision-making process.
Okay, Commissioner Lemo?
I do have one question. It's mainly for our city attorney. And this is, has nothing to do directly with safety. It's a question from my experience. When I got on the traffic commission, one of the very first things they did was take us down to Chino for a course on why we're not allowed to use stop signs to control speed. And one of the main reasons, there's many reasons, all good, but one of the main reasons was if you choose to do that, as the city of Arcadia and other cities have done, stop signs on virtually every side street, you lose the liability protections provided by the state of California. So my question is about that. When we veer away from, or when we, if we were to veer away from, to generously, the state of California standards, does it impact the city of Thousand Oaks from a liability
Can you hear me? That's a big question, right? What I would say is that the city has the authority to create the standards that it's going to apply to whether or not a intersection gets a crossing guard. And as long as those are objective standards and consistently followed, the city is going to be okay. Where you're going to get into trouble is if you inconsistently apply the policy or if you put a crossing guard at an intersection and that crossing guard does not act reasonably. That's when you're going to start getting into problem. Did that answer the question?
Perfectly. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me on a couple more questions. Just very quickly regarding our final, in the resolution, the final approval authority mentions the appeal fee. Anyone on staff know what the current appeal fee is? And would that, second quick question, follow-up is just would that follow the standard appeal process that, you know, we've utilized on like planning commission, just in terms of how somebody would appeal a decision?
Yeah, the appeal of any commission decision has, it's uniform and they all have the same fee structure, same process, and I think it's roughly $1,400 at the moment.
Okay. And then does anyone, any staff know from just a historical perspective, obviously, I, I keep coming back to the fact that we make our recommendations, they go up to council and that, you know, these sites continue to get funded, that may be on the, on the block and not meeting certain city standards. Do we know on average or can provide some kind of estimate of how many of these crossing guard locations are, are preserved by the city council when they come up? So it'd be, for instance, if five went up, they save four, they save three about every year? Do we have any historical data as to what's gone up in front of the council and what's inevitably been saved?
So Commissioner, I'll speak to, to earlier years, about a decade ago when I did this, and it was about councils, as I recall, councils concurrents with the traffic commission was somewhere around 75 or 80%. I don't think that we can really include this most current one because again, this is a, a process that council has said, before we make any more decisions, we want to step back and take a look. This is a almost 25, at least almost 25-year-old process that we just haven't taken a look at. And from a staff perspective, over time, we, we have noticed some consistencies in some schools that consistently do not meet the standards fully, but for whatever reason the council has, they've made the decision to retain those. Many of our recommendations, particularly back a decade or more ago, were really based on school closures. And so it was really kind of a cut and dry situation. I would say, I would like to flip to the other side in the request for new locations. My experience, my limited experience for those few years is that council was very consistent with the traffic commission's recommendation.
Thank you for that. That kind of just, I've mentioned it time and time again, I, I like to understand how we got here in the historical portion of it to better make decisions, you know, that are in front of us. A question for the Assistant City Attorney. As a kind of a follow-up to Commissioner Lemo's question, regardless of whether a intersection may or may not have a crossing guard or may or may not be within the objective standards, that doesn't necessarily stop, should there be, God forbid, an accident, that doesn't necessarily prevent a lawsuit against the city, would it?
I'm not sure that the existence of a crossing guard or the lack of a crossing guard is going to play any part in whether or not a city gets sued if there's an accident at an intersection.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pletcher. Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers on this, on this item?
We did have one individual that requested to speak, but they are not logged on and we did not receive any written statements.
Okay, so we've, we've finished up with our questioning, so now I will. Okay, so Commissioner Ferris has additional follow-up questions.
So I'm just trying to get an understanding of the, if the policy were in place, the, if the public wanted to have a new location from the previous list that was approved last year, they could request one in writing and that's the only way that, staff's not going to go in and look at new ones. There would need to be a written request to staff to, to take a look. That's how the public would know how to get one in front of the staff, right? Okay, I just want to make sure the public would know how the policy works. You'd evaluate it, those, then the, then for every location that is evaluated, you would determine whether it meets the city or California standards based upon what's listed in the resolution. And the recommendation would be based upon the algorithm effectively that we have put in place. And the recommendation would be if they don't meet those standards, it's a denial and the traffic commission under the resolution must deny it, correct?
That's correct.
And if it meets the standards based upon one or variety of them, be recommended to keep approval. The traffic commission at that point is this is the only point of discretion they have, which is to either approve it or deny it. Is that correct? Because they could deny it also, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So I, I guess the only, the only function the traffic commission is doing under this new policy is effectively reviewing things and denying potential locations that meet the city standards. Because all other things have already been determined before they got to the traffic commission.
Correct, with one nuance to that in that previously, prior to an adoption of this particular standard, staff sometimes independently made decisions on whether or not to even bring the matter forward to the traffic commission. In other words, a decision was made at the staff level to deny a request. So as part of this policy, this would be an open and public discussion where people could come in and have comments placed upon the record, as well as the commissioners themselves, even though you may have to deny a location. deny a location based upon the policy, still have the opportunity to say as part of the record that we think this particular location should be considered by the city council for whatever are the various reasons you feel should be included.
I do understand the, the public forum part, but it's effectively, like there's, with the exception of the Traffic Commission denying a crossing guard location that met the city standards for such, there's no decision-making by the Traffic Commission. It's effectively holding a hearing and, and receiving a report. And, I mean, I understand that, like, that is what it's done. Is that in the public interest, and is that consistent with what we want to have as the decision-making for this?
Yeah, I mean, as presented, it would be, it provides an organized venue and an opportunity, an annual ability to have a comprehensive review of all the locations, and have that be, you know, in a, in a, in a public forum for people to attend and observe and access. So that, that's one of the goals of that program. But generally, and like many other agencies and the California MUTCD, either the, the council will warrant the crossing guard to, or that intersection to be eligible for a crossing guard, or they don't. It's, there's not too much other, other opportunities or subjectivity that's typically introduced into these type of scenarios. Either you meet the council, you don't, and...
I guess the only other, only thing I'm just trying to, maybe to the commission and part of the discussion on this part, is that, do we think that that's consistent with the guidance that we provided to staff, which is, are there, is there more information for which we can evaluate whether a crossing guard location is warranted or not? I feel like the policy is, I'm a data guy and an algorithmic guy, but I feel like this is algorithmic, and there is no, there is very little human decision-making to incorporate additional information. And I'm not sure it met with that. So I would love to hear about the fellow commissioners.
Okay, so right now, I'm going to close this item to public comment, and I'm now going to open it up among discussion for the commissioners, and Commissioner Lemo is going to lead us off.
Thank you, and I'm going to apologize right up front for lengthening our meeting, because I did neglect to say something in my closing comments that I think I have the right to make as the geezer on staff, I'm sorry, on the commission. While this is not directly related to this item, it's related to all items that come before the commission. And quite frankly, even all items that come before the Planning Commission, but that's not our forum tonight. We often forget, sometimes, because of the way we get caught up in things, that we are a limited decision-making body by design. While I think that we always want to consider the public, we should remember that we are not elected, and therefore do not, under any circumstances, have the rights of elected. The good, the beautiful part about our, our sense of government here in Thousand Oaks is, if we want, if I want to appeal a decision, and I tend to think that in the next couple of months, I will be here appealing one of your decisions. But if I want to appeal your decision, it has to be done to a decision-making body that earned that right by getting elected by the elect, by the, by the citizens. That's very important to me. And the reason why I say that is, we do not serve the public first. We serve at the behest of council, and can be changed or removed at any point in time that a council member chooses that we're not following our path correctly. We are a deliberative body, we do have the right to ferret out facts, we do have the right to question staff and get clarification, mainly as a voice of the public to get that clarification, or to go on the record when people come in and make a presentation to us, to be included in council's decision. But we are not a decision-making body. In fact, the, the limited things council has asked us to decide, I believe, are limited to a cap of $20,000. At least it used to be, maybe inflation has raised that slightly. So I'd like us to remember that, and now I'll get very specific. A very wise and experienced commissioner once said to me, and I agreed with, often, we are consistent with our inconsistency. What I love about this, what I love about this is, it's another step at eliminating inconsistency. One thing that comes every time you eliminate inconsistency is the misjudgment of precedent. Well, you gave it to that school, give it to me. Or you gave that decision, do it for me. And I believe that anytime, I know, I know that one of our commissioners does understand algorithms, and according to my kids, I do not, but I am the son of an accountant, and I understand standards and policies implicitly. To me, there is a tremendous shelter for the public in standards and policies. I don't like ambiguity as a citizen, because, depends who the best lobbyist is, if you have any element of ambiguity. Here, with consistency, I like the fact that there is a standard in a policy, and the standard and policy can be changed. Worst-case scenario, it can be changed annually by findings of staff, but it can't be changed by us. It can be changed by city council. And that's the only place it should be changed. They have been elected to act in that role. And so for that reason, I like having a firm standard in policy. I love having the ability that everybody understands what that standard of policy is, and that there is an appeal process to that standard and policy. I am a little shocked that we have gone this far funding something that is outside the city limits. I'm beside myself. And I must say right up front, I have a son and his family that live outside the city limits. And I love them, but I don't care. Okay? If you're in the county, you're in the county. And why is that also important? They don't get to vote for our city council, our decision-making body. So our ability to go out, and whether we call it protection, or lording over them, makes no difference, we don't have that right. That is a county decision, and I am very, very glad that one of our criteria in our standards and policies will recognize the fact that if you are not a tax, a, well, forget taxes right now, let's not even talk about taxes. If you're not making the decision as to who your city council members are, and then who those city council members appoint to commissions, then I don't think we should be funding things in those areas, unless it's through some sort of joint, joint commission of some sort. So my bottom line, and I'm sorry that it took me so long to get there, is I do think that what staff has gone through here has been meticulous. You have been asked to go through an autopsy of what's taken place over at least the last 10 years, and maybe a little longer, and dissected it in such a way that we understand where we were. I really don't care how we got to where we were, because we're here today. And when I look at what you've done, the work that you've done, it points me in the direction of wanting to have standards and policies that are explained, that are understandable, that I have the chance to run, if I'm a citizen coming and wanting a crossing guard, that I can run those by you, I either meet the criteria, or I don't. And I want to remind everybody on this commission that virtually everything we do follows a standard and policy, like speed humps, like stop signs. So it brings us into a consistent operation with the work that we do. However, all of those things can be adjusted by going to city council, and I believe that's the way it should be. I, I want to say that, you know, I just went through an example of this this evening, when one of my colleagues had to make a presentation to the Glendale Planning Commission. And the Glendale Planning Commission basically said, if you check the boxes, you're fine. And if you don't, we're going to deny it, but you can take it to city council. Bottom line is, that's just responsible government to me. I don't want to put a child at risk, but I'll tell you where, where that cross, where those roads cross. If I'm in a situation that does not meet the criteria, and that's not satisfying to me, and I don't want to go appeal at the council, then I'm going to walk my child or my grandchild to school every single day. And I know of a lot of people that since 2001, because we measure these kinds of things, there have been more people driving their kids to school since 2001, each and every year, and it increases. The only time it doesn't increase, of course, is when school enrollment goes down. But it increases every year, and I don't care where you're going to school, even in East LA. And so for that reason, I, I am suggesting that we follow recommendation number two, and recommend that city council approve the draft City of Thousand Oaks School Crossing Guard Program standards and policies that have been enumerated, not only in this report, but by, in my opinion, a very clear explanation from staff. And I'll reserve any other comments. Would love to have the opportunity to make the motion when appropriate.
Do any of the other commissioners have any comments on this item? Commissioner Hayek, thank you.
I think one important distinction that Mr. Hidari made is that we're not, this isn't a vote to eliminate any particular crossing guard. This is, this is a discussion and review and potential policy on establishing standards, or updating standards, adjusting standards. Now, I have a little bit of a different take than, than Commissioner Lemo on the Medronia Elementary, and up until now, I didn't know it's outside city limits. Well, because we, as a school district, we operate as a school district. We're Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, Newbury Park, which is Thousand Oaks. So I just have a, I have a problem with, with that. I do believe in, in standards, I believe in setting some standards, and I believe in consistent practices. But to take one school out of 27 in the school district, just kind of doesn't, doesn't sit well with me. Even though the residents, the residential area in the school may actually sit outside of, outside of city limits, you know, those residents, you know, may work here, they, they shop here, the students and families do fundraisers here, there's, there's events, and, you know, things that go on in the school. And there's, there's students in that school that don't necessarily just come from the, the county part, or outside of city limits, or there's potentially students in there that come from within. Now, are they the ones crossing the streets? Maybe, maybe not. I just have an issue of, you know, if we're, we're Thousand Oaks, and, you know, we want to be one community, you know, Medronia is part of our school district, and I just have an issue with eliminating one school district because of where it sits, because of lines that were drawn, and, and tax maps, and everything else. But to me, they're a community school that, that is in Thousand Oaks, it's part of our school district, which is within our overall community. So I'm, I'm okay with a, setting a standard, I'm just not okay with automatically eliminating them because of where they sit on the map. I'll say that, just for that part.
Any further comments? Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in responding to some of the comments that have been made here tonight, I'll be the first to say, and I've done so on the dais while I was sitting on Planning Commission, that yes, we are, we are a body that does not make policy, we administer policy. I've shared that while, you know, on many occasions, either I've said it, or, or Commissioner David Newman has said it, we've all taken our time saying that while I was on Planning Commission, and I certainly think that this body represents that as well. However, we were, in this instance, specifically charged by the city council to really take on the development of a policies and practices that has not been updated by my count since 1999. So we are in a little bit of a different role here tonight. We are not in our traditional administrative role that we've been accustomed to, where we have these set standards, and we look at whether we put a, a speed hump, or a speed bump, or whatever. We are in a more policy crafting role. And when I look at the task before us tonight, knowing that it's been 23 years since we've really updated this, I, my approach is looking at setting a standard that could possibly last two decades. I'll just be honest, this isn't a hot topic that comes in front of the city council very often, other than the annual consent calendar, when staff takes it up with our recommendation. So with that being said, I, I, I take a little bit of a different approach than some of my fellow commissioners, and that's, that's perfectly fine, because either way, we're all here to do what has been assigned to us by the city council. As far as the Medronia issue, I certainly would have liked to seen a little bit more, instead of just kind of a, 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 a cut it cold kind of approach, I would have liked to probably have seen, because we have a new supervisor, be it him or her, just a better understanding of what the process is going to be, because I really think we should try to work with our, our county to possibly either hand off that program entirely for Medronia, so that there isn't a, a, a loss there. Just, I would have liked to have better seen maybe a little bit more of a phased-out approach than just kind of the, the rigid standard that has been put before us tonight. And then when I look at the crossing guard standard in general, I think we have to remember, I mean, I dropped my kids off this morning at Earth's in Newbury Park. While yes, more parents are driving their kids to school, the crossing guards serve more function than just handling children who solely walk from their house to the school. The crossing guards specifically at Earth's, if you sit, and I, I watched, I not only took advantage of her services, but watched for about a half an hour, and many of those children that were getting out and utilizing that crosswalk were being dropped off by their parents down the street. They were driving, being dropped off. So it's almost like that classic first mile, last mile approach, where these crossing guards help facilitate safe passage for a kid who's being dropped off by their parents, because they don't want to sit in a drop-off line that's a mile long. I think that's important to note, because I think that while we, you can't look at this as a rigid black and white standard of, do they walk to school or not? There's a lot of other ways that, you know, these crossing guards fill that function. I struggle a little bit with the idea of the, the approach staff has taken in transitioning the policy overall to the Traffic Commission for final decision. Specifically, because this ultimately is a safety issue, this is a pedestrian safety issue, this is a street safety issue. I struggle with the fact that now we're asking residents to carry a $1,400 fee for appealing, if we kind of enact this policy, which is, staff, staff has mentioned, at a very rigid standard. I can't speak for the council, I can't speak for the reasons why they have made decisions in the past to keep funding areas that are not, that don't meet those standards set by the city, the objective standards set by the city, but they've done so. And while yes, it wouldn't be 10 crossing guard locations that would be cut, it would be eight under this new standard, the way that this policy does play out, and I think, again, coming back to my approach of looking at it a decade or two down the line, this actually diminishes the crossing guard program and takes away crossing guards. And while yes, there's a way and a mechanism for parents to petition together and ask staff to consider the addition of crossing guards, I think it has... I think it has, as written, it currently has unintended consequences, unintended consequences, which would result in a diminishing of this crossing guard program overall. For that reason, while I appreciate, you know, the comments being made here today, I don't think I can support the recommendation for the city council to approve this as currently written. I think more so the way that it's been handed to this body than anything else. I, the rigid, black and white kind of standard, where if it doesn't meet the numbers, it's an automatic denial by us. But if it does meet the numbers and meets those qualifications, we do have a yes/no decision to make. It almost is administrative at that point, because if it doesn't meet the standard and it comes to us, it's more of an informational item for for the public than any decision that we would make. I do think what ultimately is missing is kind of, and I think Commissioner Ferris mentioned it, is just kind of those additional considerations that we asked for. And my impression and my takeaway from our last meeting is we double down on safety, we double down on wanting to fund this program, and really made it clear to the community. I know it's, I've talked to many parents, I've talked to trustees of the school board, I've talked to teachers. They've asked me questions about this, of where is this program going? And, you know, I said, based on our last conversation, seemed like we're kind of doubling down. And I think without kind of any options, extra options that this body could consider for ones that don't meet the hard and fast rigid numbers, again, I just think you're going to see a diminishing of this program and a decrease in pedestrian safety, and that's just not something I can, I can really support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pletcher. So at this time, I think I'll go ahead and just give my comments, and I'll be brief. But I'm, I'm a lawyer, I'm a rules guy by nature. I like definition, I like rules, laws that I can understand. I appreciate when something is well-written so that non-lawyers can understand it. And I, you know, I commend the staff on putting together the policy that's been presented to us, because it's not easy to put something like this together and try to do what's in the best interests of the city and its residents. For me personally, I, I guess, I don't know if I want to say disappointed is the right word, but there was a little bit of disappointment in the policy, because I think I share Vice Chair Pletcher and Commissioner Ferris's comments that, you know, this may be a little too rigid and number-driven for my tastes. And, you know, when I think about crossing guards and the function that they perform, and like Commissioner Pletcher, I have a daughter who goes to elementary school here, and we use the crossing guard. And I talk to the crossing guard, and I, I see the job and the function that he performs, and I'm very, I'm highly appreciative to him for that, because his job is to stand next to small children and raise a stop sign in the air, so that drivers can see him in the street and know that there are children present. And when I think about that function, I think about the, you know, when I, when I read this policy, I envision a road adjacent to a school where maybe it doesn't meet the vehicular numbers that we're looking for, and maybe it doesn't even meet the pedestrian numbers that we're looking for. But there's, there's a condition on that street which may impair, let's say, visibility. There's a bend in the road. It's a residential street, cars, trucks are parked on the street. And you have people coming down that road who may not necessarily be looking for children. And, you know, a crossing guard in that particular instance is going to prove very valuable. And so I was kind of hoping to see some additional criteria that would, would give the Traffic and Transportation Commission some factors to weigh and some discretion to apply to the policy, while at the same time, not making it so wishy-washy that, you know, as Commissioner Lemo pointed out, you're going to be up against a situation where you've created precedent by making a decision in one case, but then, you know, somebody's going to be unhappy when you turn them down in a similarly, in a similar situation, and, you know, you make a contrary decision. But, you know, I'm, I guess, from where I'm coming from, I would rather take the heat on making an inconsistent decision in favor of having some factors to apply some discretion to. Because at the end of the day, what we're deciding here is, in my mind, it's purely a public safety issue. It's, and more than a public safety issue, it's a public safety issue for children. So I think we should take a really long, hard look at whether the policy is what we want it to be. And as Vice Chair Pletcher pointed out, you know, we are in a different role tonight, and we do have an opportunity to craft and design the policy to what we think will work best. And we shouldn't just be punters for decisions to the city council and say, hey, look, this is the best policy we can come up with, and to those who don't like it or don't like our decision, go ahead and go to the city council, it's off our plate. I think we should try and craft a policy which will allow the buck to stop here as much as it can, so that we don't burden city council with requests like this in the future. So that's, those are my comments, and I think Commissioner Lemo has some more, some more to say.
I do, thank you very much, Chair. First of all, with respect to all, I do have to say, I've always been honest with you all. I disagree. I disagree. I believe that we are not in a policymaking role tonight. We are in a policy review tonight, and it would go to council. I wanted to strip out Medronia for a second, because I do understand and to some extent, agree with Commissioner Hayek, without losing consistency, and here's what I mean. We have approximately $18,000 per year per crossing guard. If memory serves me correctly, and I'm really sick of being the old guy that remembers, I believe that there was a time we never covered crossing guards, until the school district decided they couldn't afford to cover crossing guards. So the city took on a function that was never our function to begin with, and we're still trying to protect covering most of those crossing guards. Now, it would seem to me, and I'm not going to spend school district budget, but it would seem to me that $2,000 a year for a crossing guard and a decision made by the district for that school isn't a large stretch. But what's even more important to me would be that we give back the right to the county, the same rights we have as a city. County, in your budget, $2,000 a year does not even show up as a consent item. So we would like you to either reimburse the school district or pay for a crossing guard for that school. I have no problem in doing that. I have no problem in part of our motion adding to it that we are requesting that our city manager and mayor go to our county commissioner and request that on behalf of the school district. But our care for certain things doesn't allow us the non, the non-funding mechanism of Thousand Oaks, doesn't allow us to say, okay, well, I have to be honest with you, I think the homeless are a terrible distraction to drivers, and therefore, public safety is put at risk. So we need a policy on what the Traffic Commission says we should do about any homeless that are within 10 feet of a vehicle. It's unsafe for the homeless or the unhoused person, and it is unsafe for the driver. So we need to come up with that. And, well, while we're at it, I think we should ask our police officers to increase the staff and be outside of every bar to make certain that we don't take the chance anymore of drunk drivers getting on the road. Why can't you guys just arrest them in the damn parking lot? I think there are limitations to what we're allowed to do, and I'm going from the sublime to the ridiculous, and I understand that. But to me, I believe that we, we put children's safety at risk by having, by having either no policy or an inconsistent policy, or a policy that changes with what our concerns might be if we are ever considering running for council, or we think that there's something that we need to do. We should empower our city council to make the decisions they make. I would have no problem if city council looks at this and says, you know what? It's a relatively small amount of budget, under $100,000 a year. Thank you, Planning Commission. We understand your policy, we're funding the crossing guards. I'd have no problem with that at all, you know why? It's the right we gave them. We gave them that right. We don't have the right to take away the decision-making capability of council. What our right is tonight is to say, listen, city staff has put in front of us a plan that is not perfect. Again, stealing from others a lot smarter than me, perfect should never be in competition with good. I believe this is a good plan. It's not perfect. Could it be better? Well, one way I would suggest it be better is that we, as part of this number-two recommendation, request that staff works with county staff, district staff, the city manager and mayor to get funding for any school that falls outside of the City of Thousand Oaks. But still, as someone brought up very well, our students go to, as the chair did. There are citizens of our city that use that, that, that school. No problem. As far as drop-off, I don't, I think that that is not an accurate depiction, and the reason is they're going to be counted in the number that goes through the crossing guard. So the drop-offs are completely included in those numbers, and they're not high enough to meet the criteria. The fact is, every body going in front of that crossing guard is being counted. That is part of this policy. So if someone's dropping you off a mile, two miles, or a quarter mile down the road, if they're using the crossing guard, they're automatically counted. There is no one escaping the system. So the drop-offs due to an impatient parent or a parent who has to get to work on time or whatever, doesn't come into play here. And the reason it doesn't come into play is every student is counted. Every child is counted. And I like that. I like the consistency of it. And so for that reason, what I would like to do is to put forth a motion to accept the recommendation number-two, that city council approved the draft City of Thousand Oaks School Crossing Guard Program Standards and Policies enumerated in the resolution submitted with this report with two additions. And that is that a active effort is made with the management staff of the school district, the city manager of Thousand Oaks and the mayor, and a representative of our public works to work with the county to hammer out a way that Medronia, at this point in time, or any school that falls outside of the city limits, has the ability to reimburse for a crossing guard. That's number one, the one addition. The second addition is that in the event, like everything else, in the event that city council reverses a decision that was dictated by policy, the appeal fee gets refunded. Because that's the way our city works with other things. If a developer can go there and win an appeal and get his money back, then a citizen ought to be able to do the same thing. I believe it is a consistent appeal fee, so we should not fool with that consistency. And that is the motion that I would put forward this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lemo. Do we have any further item, discussion points that want to be raised? We have Commissioner Ferris.
Right, so we'll, actually, the discussion is to debate the motion, because we have it on the...
That's correct. We have a motion on the table, so the discussion now is limited to the motion on the table.
So one question, maybe staff can give us a nod on the head or whatever, if this is correct. My belief is, is that the draft resolution already has the second point of Commissioner Lemo's item, which is if the city council does it, it's already in there. So really, the only other addition on the motion is effectively the working with, okay. I just want to clarify that, that I understand. Okay, I, I share my concerns with Vice Chair Pletcher and Commissioner and the chairman here. So the reason, and I will, I'll say this, I actually agree with Commissioner Lemo's statement here. There is no policy that is in the city that is not approved by the city council. Everything is approved there, they are the elected body. Some of those policies, though, delegate decision-making authority to other bodies. And there are those other bodies who, in this, such as in this particular case, we are asked to recommend what a policy could be. It will not be approved unless the city council approves it. So I do think that that is a consistent understanding of how, where the power and decision-making authority resides. I do, the concern I have is, and actually, some of these things, the fact that we would not be funding, if the new policy says we don't fund a policy to where there is no overlap between the City of Thousand Oaks and the school district, such as these islands where Medronia is, that we won't fund them. I understand that, that seems fine. I'm not, not too, I don't have too much harp in about that. About the mechanism of evaluating the crossing guards as to whether they meet the vehicular and pedestrian standards, and they're brought to attention, and we all know what that is and what the recommendation is, I don't have a problem with that either. Those are, you know, changes, they allow us to be able to move forward and have a consistent set of standards with which to evaluate those crossing guards. I think the crossing guard locations, the thing that I have the most concern with is the the sense that it is more, more cold about how the decision is to be made. And I, I think that there are some elements within a set of guidelines and standards that is highly recommended to be followed, to where there should be some additional discretion to take into account other elements. Because those are the things that make the decision-making, like, really tough, when it's sort of like, you know, we completely understand, but we have no discretion here. The public is generally dissatisfied there. While it is true that then they can pay the fee and take the risk to send it to the council, the higher that fee goes, the less likely they are to take the risk. And, and that just is true. You could set it at $25,000, and while that, that standard is still true, that they could appeal to the council, there would be less likely for them to do that. And, and I, I think one of the things that I remember from the discussion we had in kind of providing the feedback is that we wanted there to be this sort of public understanding of it and discussion part, because we value the fact that the service is provided to the community, it's one of the things that we like about it, and that, I would want us to not move in a direction that makes it more cold if, if we can help it. And, and so, like, like I said, for some of these, some of these things, I understand the impacts of it. I think it's more about, do we have enough ability as a final decision-making authority on these items to be able to make the approval-denial decisions that can then be rightly appealed to the city council? Because it doesn't quite have that enough on that, and I would vote against this particular motion. And if, if we want to entertain the opportunity to provide feedback on how additional discretion can be provided in the policy, that might be something we want to do. can be provided in the policy, that might be something we want to discuss.
Any further discussion? Mr. Hauser?
Thank you, Chair. Staff would like to offer up a few comments based upon the conversation so far. Specifically to Madronia, you have hit upon an area that was the actual issue when this location was first adopted, in that the city sought county assistance to pay for this location. The residents generally going to that school were, in fact, city residents. But the county, and we did confirm this with the county, the county currently makes no exception for any school in the unincorporated area at this time. So while we appreciate the comments, the county was, and of course, collective bodies can change their minds at any time, there is no precedent currently for funding of that. The individual schools are responsible. Of course, an arrangement could be made between the school district and the city council to continue that. But in terms of policy for the county, they don't do that. Would also remind the commission that this particular school meets none of the criteria for a crossing guard at this time, and hasn't for several years. Whether it's our reduced standard or any other standard you would care to impose, in fact, the pedestrian counts are below that number 10 threshold that we have mentioned in our staff report. It is correct that if city council was to overturn a decision, that that process, that appeal, would be done. We'd also like to remind the commission that while there is a standard, that does not mean that you automatically have to approve a school because it meets the threshold. Now, I'm not, I can't immediately envision a situation, but similar to the MUTCD, simply meeting the standard does not automatically mean you must put a crossing guard there. In terms of the criteria that you are seeking for additional areas for consideration, staff did refer back to the CAMUTCD, because that's the guidance that most cities follow. There are four criteria, and we believe that the policies that we suggested to you address those. And those are the stop type, the speed of the roadway, the pedestrian volume, and the vehicle volume. Those are the only four considerations for establishing a crossing guard within the manual as it exists right now. That said, you as a body, and speaking to the direction from council, we've put forth our recommendation. It does not mean that you as a body cannot suggest additional criteria to be incorporated in a resolution for the city council.
And if I just may add one more item, that appeal fee which is set is an actual cost of, to provide that service, it's not, hasn't been established or set to dissuade people or at an arbitrary amount, and it's recalculated every two to four years, I believe, by the finance department. So, and as Mike said, it's refundable if the party were to get overturned on the decision.
Commissioner Lemo?
If I'm not mistaken, too, and this is, this is going back at least 20 years ago, if I'm not mistaken, we are what's referred to as a pay-as-you-go city. So in the event an appeal is overturned, that is a legitimate cost of the city. And so we're really not penalizing someone for the desire to put forth an appeal. Would you agree with that?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Hayek?
Question, do we provide crossing guards for any private schools?
No, we do not.
Is that any, is that, why is that? Is that just for public schools? Because if we're talking about schools within our boundaries, so we have two charter schools that aren't chartered by the school district. So the tax dollars that come in go out to Ventura County Office of Education, but those schools are within our, and I believe we do provide crossing guards for them, correct?
For two charter schools, that is correct.
Correct. And they were, prior to being the charter school, they were a standard elementary school.
Okay. Commissioner Lemo?
One more clarification, because I think this is important. Does anybody remember, because I don't trust my own memory, why city council decided, when the school district decided not to fund crossing guards, that city council jumped in and decided to do it? Is there anything on the record about that that anybody remembers?
Commissioner, I can speak to the original first time, when this came before council, shortly after the city was incorporated. The council at that time agreed to fund the location. It was the middle of the school year. The county, this was 1965, 1964, the county agreed to fund it for that initial, what was left of the school year, and then city council agreed to fund it thereafter. I did review essentially every single council meeting where the council considered additions. I never saw any specific reference to discussions. There were some directions for whoever was the city manager that time to enter into some discussions, but no specific indication of any agreement or non-agreement on this issue, going back, you know, the full breadth, keeping in mind that minutes for older meetings are very summary in nature.
And I just want to go on the record with my fellow commissioners, and knowing that I was still in grade school in 1964.
We would not have known that.
Oh, thanks.
And if the commission is interested, Erbs and La Granada was the very first crossing guard location in this community.
All right. Do we need further discussion, or are we ready to call for a vote on the motion? Commissioner Pletcher, or Vice Chair Pletcher?
I'd actually like to make a substitute motion that we, I think there's a lot of feedback that's been stated here tonight from certain members of the commission that may suggest that further working is required of this policy, specifically with regard to the objective standards that maybe the traffic commission is looking for. You take the substitute motion first. I believe, Mr. City Attorney.
Why would you throw out the first motion? I've never heard of that.
Generally speaking, if there's a substitute motion, then that would be voted on first. And you can only have two motions. I can do a little more research to see if the city has specific rules regarding the timing of the motion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my understanding, I believe in a parliamentary body, one cannot just grab the floor, say, I'm going to substitute a motion, and that takes precedence over the motion on the floor. Now, my understanding from parliamentary procedure also is, if one wanted to make a motion to table the motion, that is a preferred motion, and that is non-debatable and can be voted on, if that is in fact what Commissioner Pletcher or Vice Chair Pletcher would like to have.
So, Vice Chair Pletcher, do you want to proceed with your motion, your substitute motion, or do you want to make a motion to table Commissioner Lemo's motion?
Commissioner Hayek rightly says that the additional motion can be to amend the current motion, and we vote on that as well. So there are options, but not to substitute. That's not my understanding.
Okay. So I'm asking Vice Chair Pletcher what he wants to do.
Well, I'll just, I'll note for the record, standard practice in other cities and municipalities, and as spoken by the Assistant City Attorney, is substitute motions would take precedent, and there is no, if that motion in certain instances requires a second and doesn't get a second, then it would not be voted on. But, you know, I'll go ahead and withdraw the substitute motion.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we call roll on the motion that's on the table, and we'll see where we stand after that.
Okay. One question first, with regard to the motion on the table. Couple things. We, it indicated that the second part of the motion was already included in the draft resolution, so that was removed, correct? From your motion?
Returned. That's already in the...
Your motion included two amendments, and the second one, so that is off the table. And then the second point of clarification was your motion to include the two revisions that were early discussed in the final approval authority section, which was to change should to shall, and then the revision in section four? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, council. So Ms. Vasquez, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ferris?
No.
Commissioner Lemo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pletcher?
No.
Chair Mel?
No.
Commissioner Hayek?
No.
Motion fails, one to four, with Commissioner Hayek recused.
No, he was...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Motion fails, one to four, with, I'm sorry, Commissioners Hayek, Vice Chair Pletcher, and Chair Mel, and Commissioner Ferris voting no.
Okay. So we have a failed, we have a failed motion. Does anybody else want to present a motion? Okay. We have Commissioner Ferris with a question.
So, and tell me if it's appropriate to ask staff about the crafting of this particular thing. I'm trying to understand. So for number, the, under the final approval authority, it states that locations that do not meet the count standards or the additional criteria as outlined in qualifying standards shall not be approved by the traffic commission. That's the way it states. So if the commission were to identify other elements that were in the qualifying standards, and that those were in the policy, that would allow the traffic commission to, in those cases, have the ability to approve and deny, because of the statement of, if it doesn't meet the count standards or the additional criteria, then it shall not be approved. But in other cases, we have approval-denial discretion. Is that a fair reading of that statement of the policy?
Yes, I would believe so. I think the denial discretion, there may be some clarification there. I mean, if a location meets the criteria, I don't believe the commission can deny it. I believe it, as mentioned before, it's eligible for a crossing guard. It doesn't mean that it will have one or will be funded and so forth, but...
Yeah, I think that, if I remember right, it was that if it met the count standards or it met the additional ones, which are these 75 elements, that gives us the ability to approve, but we could deny. If it meets neither, then we must deny. That's great. So, and that's why I think, at least my heartburn with respect to that, was that the, what we were allowed to have in front of us to allow for approval may not have been broad enough to be able to do it. But if we were to add additional elements into the qualifying standards part of the policy...
Such as an alternative three or...
Yeah, add a three. And like, what, so if we were to craft, to add those additional things, that would provide elements for the traffic commission to take that into consideration and allow for approval-denial, but still stay within the framework of the policy staff has presented. Is that a fair way for us to get forward with this?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I mean, if I could add a little bit to that, what staff was attempting to accomplish after the last meeting was to start with the existing standards, and then take the desires of the commission to have other elements involved, and create an objective standard that could be followed, right? And staff thought that that's what was done. I see that there's a difference of opinion here on whether that was accomplished. So if the commission is looking for alternate factors to consider, I think that's fine. But what I would suggest and what I'd recommend is that those be crafted in a way that are objective. So, I mean, I think there was some discussion about discretion, right? The discretion is now to craft a policy. Later on, there's really no discretion. It either meets the policy or it doesn't meet the policy.
Commissioner Lemo?
I have a question here. I understand what you just said. That makes perfect sense to me. There should not be any discretion left for the commission when this is done. My question to you would be, under recommendation number one, if we receive the report and we have provided mountains of comments tonight, that would go to city council without a recommendation of the commission, but leave it up to city council to tailor policy based upon our comments? Is that a correct understanding?
Well, that's the, that would be recommendation number two. Or you're saying without number two?
No. What I'm saying is, if we've been given a recommendation to, well, I guess, we've been given a recommendation for one and two. If we were to receive the report, provide our comments, and then, and after you have our comments, we're done, would it then go to council to solidify a policy?
That's one potential pathway.
Okay. And here's why I'm looking for that. I think the work that you've done is good. I think that everyone has made very, very good comments. You know, I think there are some things that have to be ferreted out. The counts take place prior to a child walking into the school as opposed to walking from a mile away. But now that staff has our comments, this policy recommendation that they have here would be surrounded by those comments, and city council, who is the only elected body in this mix, nothing against staff, would then make the decision of what the policy will be, very similar to other ordinances, rules, laws, and policies within the City of Thousand Oaks. So from a consistent standpoint, you still have consistency. We're not recommending this packet of policies tonight. What we're doing is saying, here's our comments. They're all a matter of public record. Review our comments and amend this policy as city council, the legal body, can make that decision. And then we go back to doing what the traffic commission does, which is, we follow the policy as dictated by the elected body, and if anybody wants to appeal that, they appeal it back to the body who came up with the policy to begin with. Because if we create the policy, we're not giving people the right to appeal to us, that's for sure. So that is, is that in fact an option that keeps it in the decision-making venue, which is city council?
Sure. So what I'm hearing is that you would like possibly to send the existing draft policy to the city council without a recommendation, but with comments from the commission?
That is correct. I'm thinking that that is the most fair, honest, equitable, and consistent thing to do.
Yeah, I mean, the commission does have that option, yes.
But, so my own comments about that are, I mean, the city council told us to craft the policy, right? So how is it going to be, is it going to be well-received if we just kick it back upstairs to the city council and say, eh, you know, there's a draft policy here, we don't make a recommendation, just take all the noise that we've been providing you for the past hour and make some sense of it, and you figure it out? I mean, I don't know if that's what the city council really had in mind. And so, I mean, my...
But they're going to do that anyway. But they're gonna do that anyway.
Eh, you know, maybe they do, maybe they don't, but I, I feel like by doing that, it makes us look lazy. Like, we were just kinda like, eh, you know what, we, we don't know, we took a vote on a motion, it didn't pass, so, just, you know, send it over to the City Council, let them deal with it. It seems to me to, to be a, kind of an abdication of what we were charged with. You know, the way I was thinking about this was, you know, we've provided further comments tonight, right? Just kind of supplementary to what we did at the last, at the last meeting. And, you know, rather than just kicking it over to City Council and saying, here, you know, you guys figure it out, is it possible to ask staff to further, you know, digest some of the comments that we've made here tonight, and maybe try and, you know, revamp this policy a little bit, and then bring it back to us? Is that helpful at all?
Sure. I mean, the, the commission has the option to return the policy for further revisions. I, I guess what I would request, if that's the, the pleasure of the, of the commission, to be specific about what changes you want made to a draft policy. I'm not sure I know what specifically the commission is looking for with regard to changes.
See, you don't know, and if we sent it back to City Council, they'd say the same thing. We don't know what they, what these people were talking about on this Traffic and Transportation Commission. I'm afraid, that, that would be my fear. But I think Commissioner, Vice Chair Pletcher's got a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of echoing the Chair's comments, I mean, I think either way, the City Council's gonna be a final decision-making authority, whether we punt this draft policy, draft resolution up to them with our comments, or take a second and go back and maybe provide further direction and digest it, and look at it again. The City Council, either way, is gonna be the final decision-making authority. There's no question, we don't have the right to make final policy, we can provide recommendations and input, but yes, it can go up to the City Council and be completely, can turn the complete other direction. My thought is, and it comes back to just a little sliver of what the Chair actually said, in regard to his theoretical street that has a curve on it, I'm reminded, very similar of how we look at, you know, the objective standards related to stop signs, or speed humps, or speed, we have other environmental factors that may play into a decision to, that we can objectively look at, when we can implement a speed hump, speed bump, stop sign, you know, I, I come back to the speed humps because that was a more recent update that we've done as a body. Using the Chair's example, I think, you know, I'm not gonna pretend to be a traffic engineer, but looking at an objective standard of, is there, you know, is there a curve in the road? Are there any environmental factors present where we have a crossing guard stationed, or where we may propose to have a crossing guard stationed, that can play a factor or role into whether we, city staff chooses to support the idea of a crossing guard, or keeping or removing a crossing guard? I come back to the environmental factors, you know, routes of travel, curves in the road, environmental factors, I, I, I don't know. Again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but, you know, you're the experts in the room, but I, I, I just pose this question, are there any objective environmental factors present in conditions that we can also look at to, to include in a particular crossing guard situation? And I'm, I'm reminded of like, with the Planning Commission, when you have to, you approve or deny a, when you deny a project, you have to make X amount of findings on the record as to why you've chosen to deny a project. I'll just throw that question out to staff, is, is there anything objective in the environment that we could look at, or build off of, to provide for the what-ifs? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I, I just want to make a, a comment about, your comment about possibly, you know, if there's visibility, curvature, or things like that in the road. One thing is that we don't use crossing guards as traffic control devices. If there's, you know, things like road curvature, you know, that's what, maybe if it warrants a stop sign, if it warrants a signal, if it warrants maybe warning signs, things like that, that's what we would be implementing, rather than looking at a crossing guard as the solution to, you know, try to mitigate those type of circumstances. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if that would be the direction that we would use, is if, if you're looking at a crossing guard to mitigate deficient road, road conditions, I'm not sure that, you know, that's a common practice by engineers.
Okay, Commissioner Ferris?
So, so what I'm wondering, and I do think that if, if it were to, if the direction of the commission were to, to ask staff to come back with revised, I think it's on us to be more specific as to what those, those things should, should be. To me, the policy, I think, as crafted as a, as a template can work, I just feel it's too constraining on what, the conditions under which a crossing guard could be approved, based upon what's, what's here. The language sort of says, look, it's gotta, if it doesn't meet the count standards, or doesn't meet the additional qualifying standards, then it can't be approved. But under what's currently listed, you're only listed to a couple things, and so if, an example of, and I, I don't know what that should be, but, but if we were to be more specific and say, could you craft some objective standards to add to the qualifying standards section, that are aligned with what the commission would like to see, that enables that to be standards with which are allowed for us to approve a crossing guard location, that that's what I'm, I'm hoping we might be able to, to do. I just think, as crafted right now, it's just, it's too limiting, I think the commission stated that. So, maybe what we can do is say, what should the specific sections be that staff bring back to us that are objective, and still deal with those conditions that we feel should be looked at to warrant a location?
Commissioner Lemo?
Yeah, I have a suggestion. While I might not agree with the commission's right to have discretion on this, in the spirit of collaboration, this may be something that our city attorney can weigh in on. And that would be, that if a school is within 10% of the state's, or, if the school is within 10% of the lowest standard, then it becomes the discretion of the commission to make a recommendation to Council. If it's not within 10%, we're, we're bouncing way outside the lines, because we know that you cannot use a traffic guard as a traffic control device, okay? I mean, that's just, that's never gonna work. The liability is sky-high. We know that we have to have a standard, everyone has agreed that a standard is necessary. We know that the state provides us a standard, we know that the city relaxes some of those state standards. So if we say, if it's within 10% of the relaxed city standard, it becomes the discretion of the commission. That gives us the ability to have rules, that gives us the ability to have a policy, that gives us the ability to make a recommendation to Council, where Council can say, either, no, we don't want any deviation, or Council can say, yeah, you know what, 10% may be really tough, let's go for 15%, let's go for 20%. That's their decision, that's their right to expand upon it. But we physically send to Council the ability that we are willing to consider a 10% deviance for the discretion of the Traffic Commission. And so what I would like to do, in the effort of moving this forward, is make a motion, and staff, you'd have to say how you write this in, make a motion that we go back to item number two, with the amendments discussed earlier, and an amendment that says, at any point, if a school comes in with, within a 10% deviance of the city standard, that it is the discretion of the Traffic Commission to approve or deny that crossing guard. And that would be another suggested motion.
Is that a, is that, Commissioner Lemo, is that a suggested motion, or are you making that motion?
I'm making that motion, thank you.
Do, do, do we want discussion on the motion? Commissioner Ferris?
So, we're, we're getting closer, because we're amending the motion, to, the, amending the original one. But the, the, the thing I worry, the thing I worry about is the, from the public's perspective, and the parents that had, might have been relying on a crossing guard location in the past, that when we do the traffic or pedestrian analysis, and it just barely doesn't quite pass, and-
Well, if it doesn't barely pass, it's up to the commission.
But if it's 11% less than the city standards, then we have no discretion. And so, so, what, what I'm wondering is, in, in that same vein, it's sort of a, you know, if it was on the approval list last year, and it hasn't, and it, and it, as a suggested alternative, that it was on the approval list last year, but, and as long as it didn't, like, miss the standards two years in a row, or something like that. Because what that does is, something like that gives the Traffic Commission the ability to say, okay, fine, we'll approve it, but, fair warning, that it might not make it next year. Because, because what we don't, what, what, what I get worried about is, the appeal really isn't about, like, the Traffic Commission's decision, it's the appeal of the traffic study that shows that it didn't meet the standard. You know, like, they say, you're, you're telling me I need to have 40, and it's now like, 30, 35. Well, that's pretty close, that's less than 10% of the standard, that's still out of bounds. So where, where is that to where we can kind of, you know, what are those things that allow us the ability to approve, in line with the expectations of the public to do that? Does that, does that make sense?
Well, it, it doesn't, it doesn't. Let me dramatize it in a different way. Sergeant, can I ask you a question, please?
Absolutely.
Do you have the right to stop me if I'm going 10% or 11% or 12% over the speed limit?
The right, yes, sir.
You do? Why? Where's the, does the judge have discretion if I take you to court?
I have the right to stop you, it doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to issue a citation.
Do you have the right to issue me a citation?
I do.
Why?
Because it's in violation of the posted speed limit.
Thank you. There has to be a limit somewhere. I'm not suggesting, you know, if it's, if it's one or two points, keep in mind, it's one or two points outside of the 10%, okay? Whatever the standard is, there will always be one or two points, some way, somehow. Not to mention the fact that until we start getting the influx of folks from the valley, our enrollment continues to go down in schools. So the chances of, of us coming outside of some percentage, at least 10% sends the message, I don't believe, we should be sending a message to the public, but, the 10% sends the message to the public, listen, we have a policy with somewhat of a heart, but we don't have a policy where we throw the rulebook out the window and hope we don't hit somebody with it. That's the point I'm trying to make. If it's 10%, at least it's wiggle room of 10%, and it's the judgment of the commission. By the way, if I'm not mistaken, and this is a question for the city attorney, let's say somebody comes in and they're 12%. The commission does have the right to deny it, and state that it's, you know, only two points outside our policy, and let City Council, what I'm trying to do is not take away the right, wait, hold on a second, I'm not trying to take away the right for someone to not fall within that 10 or 15% or even 20%. What I'm trying to say is, if you're going to deviate from policy, there should be very little right to that of the commission, and all right to that of Council. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm not saying that, my kid could be here next week trying to deviate from policy with the PTA at, whatever their school is. I, I guess they're going to Cypress, okay? They can, and, and by the way, we also have school of choice now. So you may have somebody using those schools that are not even within the realm of that school, that's fine. But the point is, let's not take away rights from the elected body, and give them to an appointed body. All I'm saying is, good, 10% wiggle room, that's something. That sends the message you want to send to the public, that it's not a cold-hearted decision. But at some point, no matter where you set the standard, okay? Here, let me make it really simple. When I was a little kid, not that I've grown all that much now, but at least I haven't grown tall-
Well, you've grown, but you're still a kid.
Well, thank you very much for that, but, there was a ride I could not ride at Disneyland. Well, my kid's within 10%. Come on, 10%, you're gonna break a little kid's heart? There is always someone who's going to be dissatisfied. We want to mitigate as much of that as we can. Now, I think we also have to look at history. How many times, even under the current policy, has someone come and said, don't take away my crossing guard? Okay? The numbers are the numbers. There are numbers that come in that are accurate counts, and no one has to pay for that count other than the taxpayers of the city of Thousand Oaks. We get the count, and we say, you know what, the first motion did not pass because it was cold and hard, and had no room for deviation. A 10% deviation is, is pretty generous. Okay? It allows me, it allows me to go 71 and a half miles per hour on the freeway, and he can't give me a ticket. That's what I'm trying to say. By the way, I'm not admitting to anyone that I go that fast on the freeway, for the record. So don't call my wife. So my motion is one that was, was my motion stated clearly enough for, for staff?
Just real briefly in response, I mean, if the concern is to relax the standards 10 more percent than the relaxed standards we currently have, then why don't we just set that number now, and have an objective standard?
I'm absolutely fine with that. I'm, I'm very satisfied with that. And then we don't add deviation to that 10%, is my point. We live within that standard.
We, we have potentially some other flexibility that might be of interest, or it could be for discussion.
So, keeping within the spirit of the CAMUTCD, which narrowly defines some of things, there's two, two, actually, two suggested from that, and then one from our own discussion, is, first of all, street speed is a factor in consideration. Now, we have presented you an objective standard that does not take into account speed, other than that one alternative, we recognize that arterial roadways are typically gonna be busy, and by definition, they're also gonna have a higher speed. So it may be possible to build in some flexibility into the objective standard that says, when a roadway is over a certain speed, you can lower the threshold. And to what extent that would be, would be a decision of this body. Mr. Hauser, just for clarification, are you, are you looking at alternative number two, the heavy vehicle traffic alternative? Because that, that was not speed-driven, that's just purely a numbers, that's just heavy traffic.
He was referring, that that's, that's related, those arterials do have higher speeds, however, for instance, like, alternative one, the 75% alternative path, this speed issue could be added to that, so that, that would allow, you know, if, that would allow more flexibility to roadways that have 35 mile an hour or above posted speed, that they only need to meet three out of the four criteria, for instance. Or alternative three could be crafted, that says, if that's the case, then 10% reduction, roadways over 35 miles an hour, 10% reduction on all of the vehicle and pedestrian counts. That matches with some of the comments from earlier from the 10%.
A second criteria that we could look at, again, that's consistent with the MUTCD that talks about the intersection type, if you have, say, an intersection that is exceedingly- If you have, say, an intersection that is exceedingly wide in width, that takes more time to cross, there may be some criteria that could be built in to recognize that, and again, make an adjustment for that purpose. Again, these are also typically then going to be arterial streets as well, with higher speeds and higher vehicle volumes. Again, staying within the framework of the standards that are generally set for this. One of the comments that was made, and I think it is also something worth consideration, is, for many of these schools, we've known for years that they haven't met any objective criteria, and we are now going to establish an objective criteria that is, as has been commented, is rather rigid. And it may be as part of the introduction of this process, as mentioned, that it's not an immediate closure upon the adoption of this, but rather, we will, you know, we will notice the school that this is the first count, you haven't met the standard. And in the second year, if it's the second consecutive year that you have not met the standard, then that would be a cause for an automatic closure simply by not having met the criteria that has been established two years in a row. This also mitigates a situation where a school may have just barely been under or barely squeezed through, and so we, we take it away one year, and then we get a request to add it back in, and we study it, and now all of a sudden, the numbers, for whatever reason, differences in school boundaries, in traffic patterns, in families that have moved in, now suddenly meet the criteria. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, so those are some additional options to potentially include into the policy.
Vice Chair Fletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I appreciate staff looking to see, is there anything else? Because my comments, and I think is a matter of order and a point of decorum, we should be encouraging folks at the, on this dais to make comments, even if they're completely in the face of everything wrong, because they're not traffic, you know. We should be encouraging conversation and encouraging people to make comments. Because we're all learning, we're all trying to do the best job we can. And as a point of order, I don't think it's, it's appropriate to call out those comments as being, you know, "Wrong," or "We don't do that." I just want to state that for the record. That being said, I appreciate staff going back in and looking at those comments. And for the commission, I am supportive of that. I don't know how, you know, if that triggers a 10% reduction, I'm fine with that idea. I just want some kind of flexibility built in for changing circumstances and laying a policy that can work for the next decade. So I appreciate, again, that you've looked, and I support those other considerations. And if it means they trigger a 10%, I'm fine with that. Alternatively, I would like to say, one of the other things we can consider is not having this body be the final decision. Again, we can go back to the old way of maybe changing some of the objective standards, adding some flexibility, and still sending it up to city council for the final yes or no. That's also an option tonight. And Commissioner Lemo has made constant reminder of the fact that they are the final decision-making authority. I'd be even okay with handing, setting an objective standard here tonight, but then giving that final making authority back to the city council to determine, to do whatever they do. Because I still think there's other considerations that they get to think about, they get to make decisions on, that we just, we don't have that ability to make decisions on. So I just want to throw that alternative out there of saying, "Let's go back and look at an objective standard and increasing some of the flexibility with those objective standards." But I'm also supportive of the idea of we still make a recommendation, and it just goes up to council for final approval on the consent calendar, as it's always done. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Ferris?
So, given that we do have a motion on the floor, which has a revision to the qualifying standards, I guess, to do that, if, if the commission's desire is to have staff craft additional objective standards for purpose of coming back to the commission for its review and approval at another meeting, then we would need to vote the motion down. Or do we feel like we can craft those additional objective standards as amendments to the motion that we have here and try and get this done tonight? I, I'm not, I wouldn't be in favor of voting with the motion as is, because I still think that the only effect it really does have is it takes the city standards and increases, or, you know, increases them by 10% or decreases them by 10%. That's, that's all it does. It doesn't change the nature of the, you know, the algorithmic means by which we, we do that. Because if it's, if it's allowed for us to, to approve it with a 10% reduction, we could approve it or deny it, just like we can if it, you know, if it, if it met those standards. So, I'm, I'm kind of in favor of the, you know, consecutive times not meeting standards as being a little bit more automatic. But if it, if it hasn't met that, then it comes to us, and we have the ability to prove it, if it hasn't met, that it hasn't tripped over the standards multiple times in a row. Because that, that, the thing I worry about is the public being surprised by the crossing guard they relied on last year, no longer being available, and there's no discretion to deal with it, and the only way they can get it back is if they pay the fee and get the city council to pay attention. And, and that's, that's the concern. I'm trying to figure out for the commission's perspective, do we try to craft the motion now and get a lot of the objective standards articulated now? Or do we ask staff to come back with some of those so that we can have an informed discussion with something in front of us, so?
Yeah, Commissioner Lemo.
Um, I have a, I have a question of Commissioner Ferris. I want to make sure I understood what you just said. Let's lose it, use it in a situation where, if in the year 2022, I didn't meet the standard. And let's say, I'm given a warning, "Hey, you didn't meet the standard." We're going to measure it again in one year. And if you don't meet the standard in 2023, then it's going to go to the commission. But the commission then only has a 10% variance to the standard. So in other words, and then, when a decision is made, you're given one school year notice. Okay? Now, we have a standard that is more in line with the rest of the, of the, of the state, and certainly other areas, including the county. But there is no surprise to a parent. The only surprise to a parent is a parent who is not spending their Wednesday evening watching the Traffic Commission. That's the only surprise. But you've given them what in essence is a three-year notice. And after that notice, you have given them the ability to come and plead their case here. And whatever the base number is, you've given them the ability to have that 10%. If you had that provision, well, first of all, before I ask you, is that, with a time sensitivity, a legitimate provision that can be put in here as a recommendation? And then if it is, is that something that eases, I'm going to use your words, your heartburn on that?
And, yeah, the question.
I was getting, I was getting a yes on the other.
Yes, we can include that two-year bridge, or, you know, the consecutive.
Well, one-year notice.
Right, right.
One-year measurement after that. And then if they don't make it, another year that says, "In 2024 school year", it's over unless you come back to the commission.
Yeah, so in some ways, like, yes, it does address that. And I think there might be objective ways to put that into the policy. Because there are standards than there are in the evaluation, did they meet the standards? And through that understanding, how many times do they meet the standards? And, and that becomes something that is taken into consideration by the commission? Or if it's too many times, it's just like it can't be approved? So that's a part of, from my perspective. And I'm fine with that, too. I think I would need to see it exactly on, on how that works. But that, that is something in, in line with what, what my primary concern about that is. Because it does provide a little bit more, it, it helps to lessen the surprise of the public about crossing guards no longer being there. The only thing I would want to know from the rest of the commission is that, are there additional objective standards that are potentially different? Maybe that those that staff had articulated, that might also be beneficial to have as a criteria to say, "Look, it's, it actually met one of these different qualifying standards, and for that reason it gives us that." I just don't know. But what you're, to your question, yes, something along those lines, I think could, could help me in helping to, to make that. And I do, I tend to believe, I think it is important for us to come to some recommendation, affirmative recommendation of a policy for the city to enact.
And, and with, with the commission's comments there, I mean, we, we could also still incorporate the additional objective criteria that Mr. Hauser was making reference to earlier, right? Like, the, the speed criteria and the, and the distance to cross, or the width of the, of the roadway, correct?
We could. One concern staff would have would be not allowing these to be sort of cumulative things. In other words, you, you select one of these criterias being your reason why you are getting a 10%, but not going 10 plus 10 plus 10. You know, it's, it's making a, again, it keeps it very consistent. It is a standard that is implied, it is an exception that you are allowed, and you are applying this particular exception to this case. That would be, would be one concern. And then a quick clarification for staff so that we understand. Let's assume, for instance, that the policy is adopted, and council agrees with this, and we do our spring counts this upcoming March. And this particular, a particular school has noticed that it did not meet the criteria or any of the considerations. That school has noticed that it does not meet the criteria. And then we do the counts in spring 2024. The same result occurs. Then when the school year begins in the fall of 2024, that school would not have a crossing guard because it would have come before the Traffic Commission in, in that April, and it was the second consecutive year, and there's no extenuating circumstances, and then they would be noticed. We just want to be clear that it's a, a two-year sort of, or, or a, a 24-month process, if you will.
That, that's something I'm more comfortable with.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
So, we don't.
Do we want that as a friendly amendment? Or do we want that as an amendment? Can we amend the motion to include the criteria we've just discussed? Sir?
And before we do that, should we recap the, these, these additional alternatives?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
So the first alternative presented by the commission was just a blanket 10% consideration. The second consideration brought by staff was to incorporate a street speed standard that would allow a 10% deviation. The third criteria, which was staff presented, was based upon a street width for staff to determine. That could also provide a additional criteria for consideration. I'm not sure at this point if it would be a percentage of it, it would just simply be a criteria. It's something staff will have to consider. And then lastly, that it would not, any of, adoption of this policy would not result in an automatic closure of a school the first year, but rather, it would be a two-year process minimum for a school.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hauser.
So that would be my amended motion. Do I need to still restate that? Or can I take staff's?
So, I'm confused. So, so your motion would be to have the policy be revised and brought back to the commission with the addition of all those things that staff just said?
No. My motion would be to accept the policy as it is with those amendments to the existing policy we have now. Well, they are specific, they're very specific, in fact.
I want to see it again.
Yeah, I think we better have a restated motion. I think we better be crystal clear on this, because we're talking about a lot of moving parts here. So, Commissioner Ferris?
Yeah, I think that the, the decision point we're at is, do we try to be specific as to how the policy is crafted tonight and vote to approve it? Or do we ask staff to take this, these specific elements and come back with specific language for us to entertain? I am more in favor of the latter, because I think it's very clear as to what we would be voting on to do that.
Well, I, I would tend to agree with that, because they're, they're the experts. I would look to them first to craft the numbers, and, and then bring that back to us for review.
Normally, I think that is a very prudent recommendation. However, let me ask you a question. Realistically, when is that brought back? Because there's not going to be a meeting in December.
The, the next meeting likely with the appointee of the, the new commissioners, and with the election and everything, will likely not be until February.
And so, you're looking at a strong possibility, okay? That at least three of our existing commissioners are not going to be participating in the, the discussion of crafting what we thought was best. So you could be looking at accomplishing absolutely nothing at the February meeting, because everybody's got to come back up to speed again. Where we've been through the discussion, we understand the issues, we know exactly what direction we wanted to go in, and the stopgap measure is, council's going to approve it or not approve it, and it's going to be a new council as well. So, I mean, you're bringing it back to a completely different body, most likely.
But who, who, but who, but who are we? Who are we to determine at what speeds you're going to get the 10% reduction? You know, I mean, that's, we don't know that.
It's, what, he, he did sort of protect us with that, because he said, "It's not cumulative." You have the right to give the 10% with or without the speed, with or, with or without, you know, a curve or a, a traffic situation. You have that right, no matter what. The, the commission has the right to have a 10% deviance without any of those things. If you have all of those things, you don't get a 40% reduction. Okay? So the good news is, you get that. The second piece of good news is, when the decision is made, first of all, before a decision gets made, you get two bites of the apple for the school. Okay? And then they come to the commission, when they're told the second time that they don't meet the criteria, they come to a commission, and then they still have April until September before that gets put into place. So they've really had, we said 24 months, they really have 30 months from day one. So, I mean, every safety you could think of, if you're going to have a policy, is in fact put in there. Every consideration that you had allows, you can do 10% for your discretion. You can get 10% with or without your discretion, based upon your study of the roads, or the speed of those roads, or the traffic counts. So, I, I'm, I'm having a difficult time understanding where there's any ambiguity left. Because we've, we've, we've met the criteria we discussed of, we don't want to shock them, we don't want them to have a no-notice situation. You know, "Welcome back to school, by the way, there's no crossing guards." And they find that out in August, that's gone. You've got discretion on the commission within a reasonable frame of, of 10%. Why, what would be the upside of saying, "This discussion is now virtually invalid, and we're going to leave it up to another non-existing board"?
Thank you, Commissioner Lemo. Commissioner Ferris?
The upside is that the people on the Traffic Commission voting on recommending the actual language of the policy will be able to read the actual language of the policy.
I agree.
I, I think, I think that's, it is prudent public decision-making for us to do that. And I think, I mean, if we want to try and make a decision tonight, we can. We can try to really do a working session, craft the language now. I think it's probably more prudent to, to allow staff to provide the language and bring it back to the commission. And if none of us are here, then the new Traffic Commission appointees will be able to make that decision. Hopefully with some ability to have an understanding of that. We have to trust the decision-makers of our city to, to do that. I have faith in them.
Mr. Chair, staff is, is prepared to offer some specific numbers should you desire it. We could also suggest a, perhaps a 10-minute recess to give staff some additional time to construct some language that could be incorporated tonight. Or we can go with, uh, the other alternative, which is to bring this back at a later date.
Okay, without, without wanting to task the staff, uh, too much, I mean, I, I don't, I've lost ti- track of what time it is. It's 3:36, okay. Um, if, if staff is, is willing to take a 10-minute break to, to craft some language that we can consider, just so that we get clarity on, on what that would look like, um, we can do that. But I, I, I will just say that, uh, you know, I, I mean, I really don't want this meeting to go on, you know, three hours and beyond because we're trying to craft, uh, you know, policy tonight on the spot. So why don't we do this? Why don't we take, why don't we make a 10-minute, take a 10-minute adjournment? And we will reconvene, um, at, why don't, why don't, why don't we just say 8:50? And, um, see what we can, okay, Mr. Lemo's got a.
Just, just one quick question before we go. If this is left to the decision of council, there is no appeal fee. People go directly to council, they bypass the traffic commission, is that correct?
Well, it depends on how it, it's constructed, but, uh, that is one alternative.
What would be the purpose of coming to the traffic commission if it is solely a decision of council? If we're telling council, we're not going to pay attention to your recommendation, go ahead and make the decision yourself. If we were to do that, there's no appeal fee, or there's no fee charged for somebody to do that, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be kind of a two-step process. The, the traffic commission would review it, then it would go to council, or it goes directly to council. That's another alternative as well.
Maybe you just send it right to council and end all your heartache right away. End, end the need for them to recraft, uh, words. If, if, if you ultimately want council, the elected body, to make the decision, send it right to council without a review. Because if you're going to review it here and there's no policy, or there's a weak policy, uh, I would venture a guess that council would say, you know what, just send it to us and be done with it.
You know, you know, look, I, I really don't want to put staff on the spot and tell them to craft language tonight. It's, you know, look, it's, everybody's worked a full day today, it's late. And I don't want to misstep or, you know, present language which is, in hindsight, not going to be what we want it to be. So, you know, ideally, I, I would, um, you know, on second thought, I, I would not want to take an adjournment to, to ask people to start crafting up policy language at this hour. Does anybody want to make a motion, uh, to, to, to resolve the dilemma that we're in?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, uh, Ferris.
Well, if it's possible, what we can do is we can table the motion currently on the floor, vote to table it, and then provide direction to staff, uh, in order to provide this back to us at the next meeting of the traffic commission. So I will do that, I will, uh, move that we table the motion currently on the floor.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Um, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote?
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayek?
This is to table the motion and send it back, or is this just to table the motion? Yes.
Commissioner Lemo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pletcher?
Yes.
Chair Emel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four to zero, and let me read, oh, five to zero, I'm sorry. The traffic commission.
I think they're going to still, that was just one piece, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Lemo? Or, sorry, Commissioner Ferris?
Thanks, so, but I guess my, my question would then be for us, to provide direction to staff to take the elements, to, to recraft the policy and bring it back to us with those components outlined by staff, to augment the, uh, qualifying standard section of the policy for us to review, for the traffic commission to review at a later meeting. Also including the elements of, um, in the final authority, uh, changing the language on, on those, those two items. I don't think we need a motion for that, but you tell me otherwise.
I don't think so. I mean, is that staff's understanding of, of the motion?
I would do a motion. And then the question I have is, are you talking about just the, the items, excuse me, that staff recommended? And not, and not the, the 10% discussion, Commissioner Lemo? I'm trying to understand exactly which factors you want included in the policy.
The reason that I wanted the 10% in there was to allow the commission to, if, if none of the other criteria were met, of the, the new cri- the newer criteria, if none of those were met, they could move within 10% uh, in regards to a particular school. Now, that, just so that we all understand, that part of the policy would not be tested for two years. Okay, someone has to miss the threshold twice, okay, which is fine. Um, so I don't think it's necessary, I was doing it strictly out of the spirit of collaboration. It's up to the rest of the commissioners.
I'm just trying to understand if that's part of the motion or not.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yeah, I think it can be, uh, because ultimately it'll be a revised recommended policy and we will have the ability to, to add, include, amend, whatever the language is.
So it is part of your motion?
Yes, and it, yes, how about this? I'll make explicit motion, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman? Or would you prefer to enter, entertain additional discussion? Just want to make sure we're working within your prerogative.
I mean, unless there's any need for additional discussion, I think you can go ahead and just restate it.
So motion would be to, uh, ask staff to return a revised policy to, uh, include additional sections in the qualifying standards section, consistent with, um, speed, width, time, the number of times not meeting the standard, and the, the 10% uh, adjustments. Were there any additional ones I want to make sure we include? Okay. Direction to a- ask for objective standards relating to those and to be brought back, uh, for entertaining by the traffic commission.
Okay, so let's do this again. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote?
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayek?
If that's the only part we're mending and we're leaving the part of excluding one school out of the 27 schools, but including two schools that aren't part of school district, no.
Commissioner Lemo?
No.
Vice Chair Pletcher?
Yes.
Chair Emel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries three to two with Commissioner Hayek and Commissioner Lemo voting no. Um, the traffic commission makes recommendations to the city council and interested parties may attend the city council meeting and speak either for or against the recommendation of the traffic commission. Any person wishing to appeal a decision of the traffic commission shall file a written appeal and pay an appeal fee with the city clerk department within 14 days of the decision. The matter will be referred to the city council at the earliest reasonable and available date. The appeal fee will be refunded only if the city council overturns the traffic commission's decision. An appeal form is available from the recording secretary.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So we, um, we covered items seven, eight, nine, and 10 on our agenda earlier this evening. We are now going to move to item number 11, which is, uh, our future meetings. And specifically, uh, up for discussion is whether we reconvene on December 21, 2022. It looks like, uh, we may have a cancellation in store.
Another alternative could be to hold that meeting earlier in the month of December. Because of what's, what's being provided and the, the revisions that, uh, can be made aren't very lengthy in, in terms of being time-consuming. So, um, that December 21st date is close to the, the holiday week and may be impacted by certain travel or so forth. But there could be a date selected earlier in December for, uh, alternative meeting date.
So, so I suppose maybe the question may be whether, whether the commissioners are available any earlier in the month of December? Um, any, anybody, anybody got any plans for the month of December? When, when you, um, Mr. Haydari, when you say, uh, you know, come back earlier than December 21, what? Did, do you have something in mind, like a week earlier or?
Yeah, yeah, I may be keeping it on a Wednesday, but, you know, doing it earlier in the month, maybe a week earlier on the 14th. Or sticking with the 21st, uh, potentially, that, that's also certainly possible.
Is, is there any, um, does, does staff have any conflict with coming back on December 21?
I, I do not. Um, I think we'd be fine, I believe Mr. Hauser may, but, um, I can, I can cover. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Hayek?
I would just say that, so the schools are on break as of the 16th. So if we want to make this, any attempt for the public to comment or say anything, we're going to have the entire school community basically on break and whether they go away or not is a different story. But just to note that the, the schools will be closed and it's a good, probably a good likelihood that there'll be a lot of families away or on vacation during that week.
Uh, any, any other comments? Uh, Commissioner Pletcher?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with Commissioner Hayek's statement and just would note, um, I cannot make the December 14th date. I've got another public meeting I have to run, um, so I just, I don't have availability then.
And Commissioner Pletcher, are you avail- not available December 21?
Uh, 21 would work, however, I mean, I would note the, the points raised by the Commissioner Hayek regarding schools and school closures and travel close to the, close to the holiday.
Another option could be, uh, one week prior to that on December 7th. Just three weeks from today.
Can, can the commissioners make December 7? So Commissioner Ferris is on board. Um, I could, I could do it. Commissioner Hayek? December 7? Commissioner Pletcher? This isn't, this, this isn't your last meeting after all?
Well, it is, it is now, I can't make December 7.
Oh, you can't make December 7?
It is now.
Okay, so we'll have a quorum, so we, we can, we can agree to reconvene on December 7th at 6 o'clock?
Yeah, we can, uh, work in that direction. We have to verify some, uh, some factors, room, public noticing and everything. Broadcasting, city clerk and everything, but we can endeavor for that.
Okay, so, uh, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ferris has a question.
Yeah, is there, is there any specific actions we need to take to authorize staff to ensure that we can have a meeting off, off of our regular meeting schedule? I just want to make sure we're giving you that.
I mean, it sounds like what, what the motion would be, would be to cancel the December 21st meeting and then everybody's available for a special meeting on, what was it, the 7th?
Yes.
So we need a motion for that?
I would do a motion.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
That's a combined motion or?
I can, I, I'll, I'll make the motion to, uh, cancel our regularly scheduled meeting, December 21st, 2022, and, um, adjourn tonight to a special meeting on December 7th, 2022 at the posted hour, 6:00 PM.
Madam Secretary?
All right, Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayek?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lemo?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Pletcher?
Yes.
And Chair Emel?
Yes.
Okay, so motion carries four to one with Commissioner Lemo abstaining.
Okay, so I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. And we can now adjourn, uh, the next meeting to be held at 6:00 PM or at the notice time uh, on December 7th, 2022, in the boardroom of the Civic Gardens Plaza on the third floor. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.